All right, gangs all here. Matt, take it away.
All right, welcome everyone. This is nice to be doing this a little bit earlier this for this year's. If you often you've been a part of this in the past, sometimes we're doing this a little bit later in the spring. So we're just getting a head start on it this year so that it is done before sort of the budget is really considered by city council. So I'm going to share my screen. I put together a little PowerPoint about. Oh, I can't share.
There you go.
Thank you. I just put a little PowerPoint about why we're doing this. The process and then kind of what we're going to do moving forward and what we need from everyone. So believe if I share that, can everyone see my?
It just popped up.
Yeah.
Yeah, our point. Yep. Great. It doesn't show me what I'm sharing. So, all right. So. Sweet. This is our CIP subcommittee meeting. So the idea here is that we have stakeholders from each group of the subcommittee stakeholder groups. And some planning commission members so that we get input from everyone on the budgeting process. And that the planning commission is aware and they feel like they've had a say in this document. So first we'll kind of go over the CIP or capital improvement plan will refer to it as the CIP if. You're not aware is a multi-year planning tool used to identify needs and financing sources for public infrastructure improvements. So there's a little bulleted list down there. Some of the reasons why we do it. It's good to go over and kind of take inventory, identify the needs. You can kind of read all those, but importantly, it is required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. And it will allow you and keep you eligible for funding, certain funding sources.
Hey, Matt, I think your presentation is frozen.
Lovely.
Still on the cover.
Yeah, we still see the first page.
Okay. Don't know. What's?
Did you do the slideshow?
How's that?
That's very good.
There we go. Okay, that makes more sense. That's the slide I was referring to with the definition bullet points. And so as you can see, identify some capital needs, facilitate orderly planning. Plan for acquisition. And then another, you know, nice part about doing this right now is that we're finishing up your master plan. So this is a really nice time. As we finish that up and identify those implementation goals, some of them can then be rolled forward into the CIP. As a way of funding them, or at least planning to fund for them within the next six to seven year window. So. What are capital improvements? Capital improvement projects are major and infrequent expenditures such as the construction of a new facility. Major rehab or repair of an existing facility or equipment purchase. So examples of. Capital improvement projects that we see a lot in Lathor Village are extension of water and sewer lines. The police. Usually replace a car every year, every other year. The Parks and Recreation has identified a new park that they'd like to potentially look at exploring. And then the police have also identified a need for an expanded facility. So that's an example of an item that would go on here. That facility and the study of it as well. So those are some examples of capital improvement projects. Every city has a different policy. So for Lathor Village, this is sort of the criteria that we've used. The important ones here are that they have a useful life of three years. And that they cost more than $5,000. That's, that's an important one. That way we're not just doing line, line budgeting. It's more of those infrequent and large expenditures that are really. We want to make sure that everyone's aware of and that they're planned and timed accordingly with other projects. So as the third bullet point kind of talks about there does not recur annually. So those are a few more examples. So that is the villages or the cities in capital improvement policy. It's been the same for the last couple of years. So those of you that have been around are should be familiar with that. So the benefits of preparing a capital improvement plan. As we talked a little bit about earlier. You know, are the just being able to really plan and look at those, those long-term budgeting needs. But it's a prudent use of taxpayer dollars. It's a good way to generate community support. There's public hearing. And public input involved in this process of the at both the planning commission and city council, the public can weigh in. It's a good way to promote economic development by, you know, really enforcing and budgeting for those improvements. As I mentioned earlier, keep you eligible for state and federal grants. And then I have this highlighted here. I'm going to see if this works. So I don't know if many of you recall, but. Last year we did this Lathor Village actually was one of the first communities we did it for. So hopefully you can all see this window that popped up. Or is it great? So this is your capital improvement dashboard. This is online. There's a link to it in the plan. And basically this has all of the cities capital improvement needs based on their or projects based on the department. So you can really see where they start to overlap. And then it gives everybody, if so, if we click on just the DPS. For example, you can kind of zoom in a little bit further and it gives. Both you and the public a really open and transparent view of what's going on, when it's planned for. Who's paying for it and those types of things. So you can look at things by funding source or by fiscal year. So. Needless to say, this is a really nice tool to promote transparency in the planning process. I mean, you know, one of the things we hate to hear when we get a plan is, you know, something's being considered for approval and the public says, well, I never heard of this. And when did, when was this talked about? You know, where did the money come from? So this is, this is the chance to really put that out there, let everybody know. Get the input and make it as transparent as possible. And then as that map kind of showed, being able to look at all those projects on the same map. Can identify some coordination and cost sharing between projects such as, you know, maybe coordinating a water and a road repair so that there. You're not ripping out a new road, you know, a year or two later. So those are some, some of the reasons we prepare the capital improvement plan. So the planning commission here has an important role. And as I mentioned in the last slide, really want you to feel, you know, we want the planning commission to know. Feel like they've had a part in drafting this document and knowing the projects that are in here and why they're here. So we ensure that the public works projects are consistent with the land uses identified in the comprehensive plan. That's a big task of the planning commission. So working on both of these documents kind of gives you a unique perspective. Confirm the projects outlined are reasonable. And then you make a recommendation to. To the CIP for the city, to the city council to be included in the budget. So it's just sort of another layer of, you know, oversight from the planning commission. So we're going to take a little look at the process here, starting with where we are right now in December 2020. We sort of went to start the process. We look at all the policy documents as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan. We've, you know, worked with Scott, your engineer on the roads plan, roads, water and sewer, and then kind of the other programs looking at the old plan. To sort of bring all those projects together and have a little summary on that spreadsheet. We look at the project types. Based on, so then we send out all the forms to all the departments. Everyone fills that out with the project types. If we're lucky, they come back on the forums, but we got most of the information that we need back. So I've taken those forums, put them all into the spreadsheet that you might all be familiar with seeing, which will be shared in a minute. So that's sort of the, the background research of it. Now we're going to go through and look at those projects. Go through the evaluation and rating where that's necessary. And then we'll move on. Eventually in January, you'll see a draft capital improvement plan. After the planning commission checks it out in January, that'll be for the whole commission. If everything looks good, you would set a public hearing for February. Of 2021. At which point you would recommend approval of the plan. Any revisions or comments would be made by its staff through the administrative review. And then they would go on to city council. And again, this is a to be included in the, the upcoming years fiscal budget. So that would, and that happens in, I believe, May or June for the city. So that's why we want to get out ahead of it and have this done. So they can actually budget for these items if necessary. So are there any questions on the process so far? Before I move into our projects. Hearing none, seeing none. All right. So as I mentioned, we took a look at some of the other plans, the comprehensive plan from the past year and the one that we're working on right now. Past CIP and budgets, there were some bond funds to consider. And the project types are listed on the right there with infrastructure upgrades, road paving, there's some DDA. Placemaking projects, vehicle and equipment purchases, and then public safety and law enforcement purchases. Just a little review. These are all of the program areas within the capital improvement plan. So each of these will have projects that we're going to go over. The next slide. So I wanted to take this opportunity here. So this should probably be after we take a look at the projects. So. Once we go through these, I'll check to see if there's any additional projects that we missed and then we'll go through and rank any of them. If there's any that need to be bumped to a later year. So. Can everyone, I'm hoping that we can all see this. If you have it full screen, I know it might be a little small. But sort of the, I just wanted to put this up here. This is the project list for the first couple of. Departments stakeholder groups that I had listed earlier. So I'm going to just run through these really, really quickly. And if anyone from these departments has a comment, question, concern about how it was recorded here. Maybe just note that and send me a message. Because we want to make sure that we include all the projects right now so that we can get an accurate draft in January. So moving to the administrative department, which is a lot of the improvements within city hall and those. The city manager's office, the, there was a request for a $10,000 study. She's basically feasibility study for a new police department. If I don't know if anyone reviewed last year's or previous draft versions of this plan, but a new police department has been in the. Capital improvement plan and actual building has been in there for the last, I believe, four years since we've been doing this. So a little bit of talk last year, we decided, you know, to budget for a feasibility study, see what that looks like. And if it's, and but the, the best cost savings are the most efficient way to move forward, but that is. So that was, they'll see that there under fiscal year 2021, 22, which is the first fiscal year of this plan. There is also a city hall lobby renovation and then city hall carpet replacement on the second floor. So those were, I only had three for the administrative. Department this year. DPS, I received two new. Requests this year. I wasn't sure. I know, Susie, there was a note that there was a little change, change going on in that department so that. I just put these two on there. Again, these are two that have been on here for several years. They're both budgeted for this year. So I don't know if. We want to look into, I don't know what the budget for the Department of Public Services looks like, but. They've been requesting a new backhoe tractor and a new leaf pack for, for several years now. So those have both been requested for 2021, 22. Moving on to the DDA, I had all of the projects, I believe, were completed last year, or they were all scheduled to be completed for last year.
They were all scheduled to be completed for last year with the exception of. The right of way parking and the bus stop improvement. That was more of a.
So maybe we'll wrap that into the master plan. Then I know the bus stop improvements, we talk a lot, we have a whole section on, on that. So I think that'll be good. Maybe I'll add that back in here for a later year.
Yeah.
Just to tie back to the master plan. Awesome. And then I, I did get the, the one new form for, for the remainder of the hanging flower baskets. Long, I believe it was Southfield Road.
Yeah.
Awesome. So moving on then Parks Department had three requests. Four requests actually, two for the upcoming 2021, 22 fiscal year, which was a splash pad study and. Basically a feasibility study to see what the cost would be for a splash pad and where it might go. So that, that's one we've heard some from surrounding communities are also interested in those. So. It's definitely a popular item. It's something that the planning commission should probably discuss if that's. Something they seriously want to consider studying. The other item that was on there was Golden Gate Park update and study and planning. So again, the same kind of thing to, to analyze Golden Gate Park to see what improvement should be made. So those were both requested for this year or for the following, the upcoming year. New playground equipment was requested for the park or. In 2022, 23. So that's a good opportunity to maybe look at potential grant funding since it's. Out a couple of years, you have some time and with an updated Parks and Rec plan. You will be eligible and I believe the cities receive funding for that in the past. So that's another reason we like to do this now is to, to potentially note that and at least budget for, for some of that if possible. And then another item that was noted in the Parks and Rec plan. And last year was the kind of acquisition and development of a park in the southeastern portion of the city. So south of 696 east of Southfield Road, there's no parks over there. So any of the residents would have to cross one of those major thoroughfares. So. That's been requested to be put in here. There was no. There was no line number for that. So we just put that in here as sort of a placeholder reminder that. It may be an upcoming expense in the, in the upcoming years. So again, not a whole lot of conflicts to, to really resolve there. Those, those costs seem to be spread out a little bit. Police, I received five new requests. There was, I believe, eight forms that were sent in, but. And I believe there were some more for the administrative as well. But so if you submitted forms for something and aren't seeing it on here. It probably did not meet the $5,000 minimum project threshold. So that, so if anyone is curious where I think there were some of the administrative and in the police that didn't quite meet that. So that would just go into your, your annual department budget. So for the police, we had the, the ongoing taser replacement purchase program. That was approved several years ago and has been ongoing. As I mentioned, they typically replace a vehicle. I don't think one was replaced last year. So. This would, this would be a year to replace one of the patrol vehicles. There was some computer replacement noted and that one is spread out over a four-year period. So. I mentioned, I don't think I mentioned it earlier, but IT projects are sometimes rolled into. So it's a $12,000 total spread out. So that's why. It's included in here, even though yearly it's, it doesn't meet the $5,000 number. The whole project still is considered one. And then new portable radios. There was a note from the chief that Oakland County is switching police radios. So. That'll be in the project description, but that was requested for this upcoming year 21, 22. And then, as I mentioned, you know, every year we see that. We're reminded that the police are very tight on space in their current situation and would like to explore a new police station. So I put a note here to see project AD that should say two, one, which is that police department building analysis and feasibility study. So that'll be, that, that's being addressed to the administrative, administrative portion. So I'm going to pause right here because the next page is all infrastructure improvements. So this is a good opportunity. Does anyone see anything that was missed or needs to be corrected?
This one's for Suzie. Were you looking to put the alleys into the DDA for next year?
I, yeah, that would be great. I suppose that would be the only, yeah, that's the only project that would be missing from. Well, DDA, DDA infrastructure. I definitely think the alleyways need to get addressed. So. You know, if it's a, you know, somehow including. Is that like the feasibility study would be Scott and then coming up with our plan to start. I mean, we can start. At least include the feasibility study and then start working on. Right. Developing the budget from there, I guess.
Is that like for access management purposes or is it?
It's more for condition.
For condition.
Combination of both. We want to look into the access also.
And see, all right. Cool. Well, we'll make a note on that and we'll make sure we get a project description, an accurate one for that. So. Something DDA will be getting an additional alley feasibility and condition analysis. Okay, anything else aside from that DDA alley line item?
Sounds like, this is Jason speaking, some, some of these projects are. Have been previously approved and are multi-year projects that are already in flight, like the hanging flower baskets, I think is one of them. And the, the tasers is another one. Do we have an idea of the existing costs of those projects from the previous years and how, you know, so we can track the total cost of those projects over the multiple years?
Absolutely. That is a possibility. I, I can actually go through and just put that in the. A lot of that comes through in the project description, but I'll see if there's maybe a way to include it on this as each in the.
It's necessary to have it in here if it's in the project description, as long as it's available somewhere.
Awesome. I will note that ongoing projects.
I have a question for Cheryl. Cheryl, should the administration have a generator in there? Yes, it was in, it was approved in a previous year. We did not acquire it that year. So. I guess my question is if it was budgeted for previously, but we did not make those purchases. Do we need to reallocate?
I, yeah, I made a note. I don't know if it got out with, but I had kind of requested that if a project didn't. Or was approved, I was assuming that it was purchased unless I was notified. Kind of, so yeah, so if there was anything that, that's a great example that was approved in 2020. That wasn't purchased and you'd like to roll that into this plan, then yeah, just a new, a new form for that. So I can be sure to include it. Awesome.
Okay, what, thank you. Would it be helpful? Would it be helpful to? Go over what was in the last, like quickly list what was in the last.
I.
Is it, I was going to say, does it make sense to include a column showing the previous? The previous year budget and then maybe color coding what was, you know, approved or spent and what was actually acquired. And that way we have that reference. And that reference is there for. You know, understanding things that were approved, but not.
So I'm.
Or acquired.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I just, it's hard for me. I don't have that information. So if, if each department would like to share with me, that was part of the. And sending out the forums, I was, we, we haven't typically done that. So I'm happy to go back and note what was accomplished from the 2020 plan. Yeah, that can be done.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. And I think also if there's. Examples of, of like, say, the police, the police department, new building and, and the discussion of, of funding a study was, was discussed. That, that track record of what decisions were made up, you know, so that we can follow along or at least track back. You know, what was decided and, and, and use that as a guide to help. Gauge decisions moving, you know, moving forward. Like this has been something that's been sitting on a back burner for too long or this is, you know, just so there's that perspective.
Yeah.
I think that can go easily into the, the text portion of the document. So when we talk about the narrative behind each department. We can include there, these items were acquired last year. Or I think the police station is a good example of something that, you know, how, how long are you going to leave it on the list? You know, I mean, we may not need to take it off now, but like five years from now, if we're still talking about this, maybe that's another point where we say, gosh, you know. Is there another way we can accomplish this?
Yeah, that or a real, a sit down discussion of some sort is that, that, that says, hey, this is, you know, how do you make it more than a dream?
Right, like we really need this and how do we fund it?
Right.
So that we don't have to keep kicking it down the road every time we do the CIP. Yeah.
Right.
So I would like to add relative to the police department. I'm anticipating on Monday, the council is going to approve a architect to do the. Initial assessment for converting the lower level into space to accommodate the police department. Anticipating that we move forward with that, then that reconstruction. Project would need to be reflected in the CIP. We don't have the cost though.
Would. I think Matt's. Advice was a good, was good in taking a last year's CIP. And even if you're just highlighting. The items that have been purchased or taken off the list. Like.
Yeah, I can, if I can send the last year's spreadsheet out like this.
Yeah.
And maybe each department could comment. I, and that way we can, I guess it's, yeah, it's tough for me to know, especially with, with ones that. Are on, you know, the like DPS has had a backhoe tractor on the upcoming fiscal year. I think every year we've done this. So I think that's a good, another example of one though, where, where there needs to be an actual conversation and say, is this? Does, is this just, you know, do we need to rank it? Do we need to budget each year for it or something? But I, I think that would be a, a helpful exercise to. For, for each department to go through to kind of look back at their. Their previous years and say what they've really been asking for, what was purchased, what was removed. Yeah.
Man, if you want to send that out to me and then I'll just, I'll send, I'll send staff, I'll send it out to staff and you guys can just respond to me and I'll. Make sure I highlight and.
Okay.
Get that back to you.
Yeah. And just if you're not sure about something, just shoot us an email or give us a call like. We want to make it as easy for you as possible, but we can't do it all without your input. So.
Yeah, so.
The other thing relative to the police department, and we're only having the initial conversations now is relative to the acquisition of body cams.
Okay. So is that good? Again, is that going to be for the upcoming year? Fiscal budget or I guess it doesn't really matter if you just want to. Fill out a form, but I don't know if you have a cost or anything on that. Well, we can at least put a line item in here and. Start looking at where that makes sense, when that makes sense to purchase.
Okay.
So. All right. So a couple more items for the police there. So a couple more items for the police there. Administration for the generator. Okay, so I'm going to move on to now our infrastructure page. So this is again, your roads, there's sanitary sewer and water. So I don't know how much, Scott, I don't know if you want to give a brief overview of the, any of the bond funding stuff about, you know, that. Or any of that, but it, it appears that everything is spread out over, you know, appropriately. I don't have much budgetary information to, to say if these are going to work within the budget, but this is here for discussion.
Sorry about that, my mouse died.
No worries, no worries. So I didn't, I didn't put the project descriptions in here, it gets a little, little busier, but this one was, these are a little tougher. I'm not sure how much the committee has, what they have to say on it, but you know, we're, we're here to, we got Scott here to answer any questions on it. Like I said, I don't know if you want to go over just briefly, any of the new funding that was, that is available and what the general plan is for the roads and, yeah.
Sure, so we'll start with the roads, you know, the city voters approved a close to a $6 million paving program. That's going to get started in 2021. We're out there right now doing surveys and starting on the designs. The 21 program is about two miles long and about 2.1 million. Subsequently, the 20 and 20, 22 and 23 paving program are about the same size. We're, we're trying to do two to two and a half miles a year, ultimately seven miles over the next three summers. There's one little portion there that's the local slash major road fund. There should be a number in there. I, I'll work with Matt to get that in.
Yeah.
The city's looking to budget out of the local and major roads for the reconstruction of a small portion of Santa Barbara that is actually concrete and it's up towards Roseland. Since the bond issue did not include any concrete streets, the, the infrastructure committee thought it would be fair to use the, the local and major road fund for that and not the, the voter approved bond issue. But moving on to the sanitary sewer, a lot of improvements planned over the next four years. Currently, the city has a contractor evaluating about 30,000 lineal feet of sanitary sewer by cleaning and televising the sewer. We hope to have them videos starting to roll in around the first of the year, so we can start assessing the, the sewer condition and making recommendations for any types of repairs. So you can see there's the 21, 22, 23, 24, I think we even pushed into 25 sewer improvements. So we're, the city's budgeting about $120,000 a year to make any improvements and repairs that are found during the, the assessment period. The city's working with Oakland County on the city's retention tank. Oakland County, at their cost, did an internal evaluation of the, of the tank itself and have recommended approximately $500,000 in needed repairs. Some of them repairs are safety related, some of them repairs are equipment related for pumps and impellers. There's some painting included in there. There's a lot of paint chipping from the walls and the ceilings in certain locations. And then we also put in there for 2022 for doing some storm sewer CCTV. The city hasn't looked at their storm sewers, I think since, I want to say it was 1995 is the last time they did an evaluation of the storm sewers. So trying to get some kind of budget in there, start evaluating the, the storm sewers themselves. The water is a whole different animal. So currently, as everyone knows, the city is, is required to do what they call distribution system materials inventory. So is what that includes is, is basically an excavation at everybody's property at their, their shut off valve. So we have to dig down about five and a half feet to find that pipe. We have to excavate 18 inches on each side of that shut off service and determine what the material is. It's, it's typically either lead, copper or galvanized. Anything that is lead or galvanized requires a replacement. So the city has, I think we have budgeted over the next three summers to do that work. So that includes about 1,500 residents where we have to determine what the material is out in the right of way. In addition to that, we have to evaluate what the, what the material is inside of the house. And the city just started trying to do that through a website. And I, and I'm pretty sure they, they've, they've got it on their, the city's webpage where you can go on there. It gives you direction on how to document and determine what type of service lead you have. Other than getting residents to do it, we'll have to start knocking on doors and that's going to get expensive also and very consuming. So.
So are we, are we hopeful that that program is going to, I guess, lead to some success and, and avoid some of the other more invasive investigation or does this invasive investigation of property on the properties have to occur anyway?
If, if, if the interior is determined to be lead, there's no reason to dig outside because we already know we got to replace it. So the more information we can find on the inside of the homes, hopefully the less work we have to do on the outside. If the inside is, is copper, we still got to dig outside because there's no guarantee, there's not a change of material somewhere in there. And frankly, the, the Eagle has not, has not provided final guidance on how to do that, so we're winging it a little bit right now. Supposedly in January, Eagle's going to come out with their final guidance on what they're going to accept for verification. But we think right now this is the right way to move forward.
Okay.
And the, the city has four years to do this, so we're trying to do it over three years.
Yeah.
There's some other items in there. There's four years of water main replacement is what the goal is there is we've identified some water mains on specific street sections that we, that are also potentially included in the, the paving bond issue. We want to get and replace that water main, of course, before we redo the road. So we've, we've moved them streets forward over the next three, four years. Fire hydrants replacing and refurbishing, we have three years of that. The city has about 250 fire hydrants. And I think over 60% of them are vintage 1920 fire hydrants. And we've had conversations with Southfield Fire Department, the condition of the fire hydrants are not very good. There's oftentimes they go to use them and they're not functioning. So we're working with the city's DPW to replace, we're, we're assuming replacing about half of them and they'll also be able to refurbish about half of them at a much less cost. And the same goes with the, the gate valve and well, gate valve replacements. The city has 300 gate valves. Oftentimes the gate valves are so old they won't close. So if there's a water main break, the city can't get the, the valves closed. So they have to keep going back, 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 further and further, shut more valves off. Ultimately, they end up making there's repairs with a lot of pressure still in that water main, which is, which is a safety issue. For instance, they just had to make a tie-in over at Santa Barbara and Roseland, they had to shut down 15 gate valves to get it to close. 15 gate valves probably took 200 residents out of water service. So it's just good maintenance, get them, them replaced. I think that covers all of that. So as, as far as the funding and Cheryl, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this or you don't, I'm going to say nothing. City's looking at doing a capital improvement bond issue for a lot of these repairs. So when you see the, the funding sources, the CIP bond issue, the city's looking to, to go out for a capital improvement bond to make a lot of these repairs. Capital improvement bonds have to be spent within three years, so that's why a lot of these projects are, I don't want to say fast track, but they're pushed forward to cover these in the next three years under the bond issue. So, and I think that's coming to council fairly soon. So if there's, I'm sure you guys got questions on that, but I think that covers all three of them, utilities.
Thanks. That was, that was helpful. So, and again, I think, you know, as he was explaining a little bit there, that's where it's really nice to see when we map the project, projects to, to start line, you know, seeing those water and sewer and road projects all lined up. So we'll, we'll work to get those ready for the January meeting, so we can all take a look at where those are as well.
Matt, on a side note, you probably need to take off the 2025 paving program. It's, it's a three-year program.
Okay. Problem.
We're just in the effort of keeping us all on target at 6:45. So I would say we have like 10 minutes to wrap up.
Yeah, I, I don't have much else. I think I have a couple of slides. I was just going to go through. My next slide is talking about where there are funding sort of shortfalls and we need to rank projects or, or pick one over the other. We, there is a ranking system that's been used, it's a sort of a universal capital improvements one. So I, I won't run through and read all these, all these, the, the ranking system is described in each of the previous drafts and I believe it was sent out with the materials as well, so. But that is how you would look at some of these larger projects, you know, some of the road ones that would be essential. You know, there's, there's really no other option. You have to do them either by state law or just, just to provide essential services. So those are a lot of the next year projects, if you will, the, you know, the upcoming fiscal year desirable projects. So this is a one through four ranking, by the way, four is the highest, three is desirable. So this is high priority, you know, this is what a lot of them came in ranked as when we asked people to self rank them. And then there's acceptable and deferable. So if we need to get into that with the planning commission, we'll, we'll be using this rating scale, but I didn't see a whole lot that of conflicts within each department, so maybe working with staff, we'll see if there's any departments that need to have their projects moved at all. So that'll really be the last step in, in this process before the draft is finalized, is just kind of making sure all these projects are in there and ranking them. So next steps, I'll run through these, as I mentioned, we'll make all these changes. Probably send it out to the departments, have them review it. Send a draft to the planning commission in January for them to review for discussion. If it's ready, the planning commission would set a public hearing, I believe February 16th was the 2021 meeting date. So somewhere in February, once adopted, the PC or the planning commission will hold a public hearing in February, would adopt and then recommend that city council approve it, which would happen sometime in March, April, May, it gives us a few months to, to line up those budgets. So if there's any burning questions, I will take them now, otherwise I think if we have project comments, summarize them. I think Suzie said, send them to her and she'll send them all over to me in one batch. Yeah.
The prioritization of the projects that's done by department, by department, by the department.
Yeah, each, I'll, I'll include those in the next, in, in the, the final draft each, when I go through the project description, the text has what it was ranked, that's more used to when there's a whole bunch of projects requested for one year and to sort of see what needs to be done. So we'll, we'll take, I said, we'll take a look and see, if everyone's projects are within their budget and can be accommodated, then there's not a hole that's not as important. So I think that'll be the next step, that'll kind of come out in this finalization where there are shortfalls that need to be addressed and projects need to be moved.
True, and I imagine some of those projects are necessary, right?
Like the. Yeah, the water ones sound like. So absolutely, so you know, that's where it's, it's to see all those kind of across every department lined up and you really start to see that that has to be done. No problem. So if there's no further questions, I know a lot of you have a meeting in 10 minutes. Give you a little break here. Probably had enough of me for the evening.
All right.
Thanks Matt for presenting.
Matt, thank you.
Appreciate that. No.
All right, cool.
Stop the share.
Awesome, and I will plan to get all that. I'll plan to get that out to you. Hopefully before the end of the year, right? Right, Matt, does that sound reasonable?
Next year's fine, yeah.
Starting on the 24th. Won't be, most of us won't be responding to messages.
Right on. So early next year, everybody, I'll make sure that you have. Information and I'll, I'll, I'll resend the, in the meantime, I will resend the CIP that is the 2020 CIP, so you can flip through there and if there were, you know, that may also be a good way to go through it.
Absolutely, and I can even just make a comparative spreadsheet and just sort of add these projects to the last year's. Just identify them so you can see, you know, because I know there were some departments that had six or seven projects. Administrative, DPS, DDA all had a bunch and they worked here this year, so you can kind of see how it evolves over the years.
Perfect, all right.
Cool. All right, it's great seeing everyone, yep.